Discuss that with staff and get a ruling on that because ordinance is calling for a 20-foot setback. If the covenant still governs here, then we would be within that right. We wouldn't be asking for a variance for a reduction in rear yard setback. We'd just be asking for a variance in lot coverage here. Oh, thank you. In the area I was talking about was along this rear property line here. This is the rear yard setback. In this orientation of the building, Wooddale's down here. What we'd like to do is take the parking lot from back here and relocate it to the front. Currently, the front area right now is currently here along this side of the building is surface retention for the site. Way we would solve our detention situation, preliminary calculations say we'd put a retention vault in approximately the size of this part of the parking lot to handle the retention necessary for the site. We do have experience doing underground retention. Our site at Wooddale and Thorndale, the 1020 building, is underground retention. We find it most economical ways of doing retention these days. With this variance also, we'd be adding three dock doors and one drive-in door at this side, as long as an extra drive-in door here. The big, we're also needing a variance for lot coverage. Our current M1 zoning will allow us 70% lot coverage. With this scheme, we're asking for a variance for 84%, which is an increase of 14% lot coverage.
Any questions so far?
I just, if there's any questions right this second, that's all. I mean, I can keep moving forward. I've just...
I'd like to hear his whole presentation first because maybe he'll answer some of the questions that may come.
Right, exactly.
That's fine, not a problem. In regards to the existing landscaping that we have on the site, the site has a large amount of landscaping, especially here now because of the Birmingham and the retention area. We have a lot of landscaping here. I did put some scenarios within the package I submitted to the village, how we reuse that landscaping. Peter, could you push the drawing up a little bit higher so we could see Wooddale? Due to the vastness of the amount of vegetation we have on the site, we are going to be able to retain approximately 90% in that range of what we can replant on the site based upon our new scheme. Around the perimeter of the building, that would not change. That would stay existing. The front of the building obviously would be the same. Nothing across the back would change. A little bit of landscaping here would change because of the peninsula that's there now would change because obviously allowing us for more impervious surface. The major relocation of plants would be this area and around this area here. And, excuse me, along this frontage, we have some shrubs planted here now. But we estimate about 90%. We have enough room in the area between the curb and the right-of-way area to relocate this landscaping. So we would not lose anything aesthetically. We would not look like what Julosco does across the street. A few plants and just a wall and some pavement.
By the way, that retention in front is basically just a ditch.
Correct. It's just surface retention right now. We are actually going to put it underground in a vault, which we've done at our 1020 Wooddale site.
Anything else you need to tell us?
At this point, no. I want to see where the questions are.
Alderman Coles.
You're not changing the design of the building, just adding a section to it?
Correct. We are just adding on to the...
And changing the front of, the front sections for its parking lot. Basically, the size of the building will change a little bit. It will be a little bigger.
Correct. What we're...
And he does, it is a good-looking building, so I don't think he's going to do anything that will harm. All his buildings look so good. That's one of the reasons why we like him to build in here. I suggest that we make a motion and see if we can pass it.
Alderman Caddella.
Is there any give and take here? I mean, if we give you the variance, what does Wooddale get out of the deal? I mean, we still end up with the warehouse one way or another. You end up with occupancy, but I don't know how much of a difference it makes to the city. I can't guarantee we'll get a retail tenant right there like we were successful with the 1020 building.
Right, and that's what I had heard discussion of at one point, that it would be nice.
Our marketing group is targeting, trying to find a tenant just like MSC is, absolutely. That's wonderful. But we can't just pigeon ourselves, pigeonhole ourselves just to that and just allow a building to sit. Yes, it's, we can afford to hold it. Yes, we can pay the taxes. We can take care of the mortgages. Not a problem there. It's not a hardship. But we'd like to be able to have opportunity to use this because the marketing research is showing us that a building this size will not move very quickly because of the number of bays. And it's not because maybe all nine bays will be used at one time. It may use three bays for receiving, four bays for shipping, and a couple of bays open free in between for communication between the spaces and things like that. That's what we're also finding out. I wish I could say we could put a retail person for Wooddale tomorrow. I really would.
Alderman Felice.
As far as, as far as going from 70 to 84%,
Yes.
just for the sake of increasing warehouse space, I think if we pass this, all we're going to do is set a precedence for everybody else in the industrial park to just come in. Hey, let's, we want more lot coverage. We want more space, 70 to 84%. My feeling is if you were telling me Echo Star was in there, which the building is vacant right now.
Correct. Been vacant for approximately three months.
But let's, whatever, let's say it was a restaurant or somebody who's bringing in sales tax dollars and the guy's just bulging at the seams and he's coming in and saying, "Listen, we'd like to put in more, more, get more tables in or more whatever." I could see considering it, but just considering expanding a warehouse, I think all we're going to do is open up the rest of the sub-industrial park to come in and start saying, "Hey, we want 84% lot coverage also."
Alderman, I believe just one or two lots just north of our site, it's B occupancy, which allows 90% lot coverage. It'll be bigger than our building even if they put one up, allow that to happen.
Yeah, it is B2, just to the north of it, so they would have 90% if they were one lot to the north. Alderman Wesley.
I have, I have a concern about the parking in front of that building that you're going to use for underground detention. I don't believe in that underground detention basin. Who's going to maintain that detention basin if it fails? The piping?
What happens if underground sewer fails? We have to maintain that too. Or if the surface retention fails, we have to maintain that too.
Is that going to be part of the owners who buys this building from you? That that's going to be in a letter saying that if that's their responsibility?
Well, it's on their property, yes.
Well, also, the part of that is on the right-of-way too, though.
No, we can't build in the right-of-way. We cannot put that retention in the right-of-way. It has to stay on our property.
And what, so the market is that the reason why this is coming to us is your market that you market out there?
Yes, sir.
Requires more dock places? And where have you marketed to come up with this besides Western Access, which won't come till, I believe, 2016?
Okay, so, I mean, completed by 2016 or start 2016? Or do we know?
The way the meeting that we went to, it was start 2016.
Okay, well, I was not there. That's what I'm asking, that's all. You understand.
But that's what I'm saying.
No, that's fine.
2016, I'm granting something for you with the market that you're saying, you did your market out there saying you needed the Western Access of O'Hare Field. We know, and we just told you that it won't be 2016. Where have you marketed this that someone is requesting or who may be?
It's the information that we're getting as a general census that buildings around here that are 50,000 square feet or a little bit larger are around nine to 10 dock spaces to them. And that's what everybody's starting to look for, for that. I mean, that's the information being provided to me by our marketing group, okay? But case in point, our Wooddale-Thorndale is a 10 dock space.
Alderman Felice.
Question probably for Roger. He's sitting on M1 and then there's B2 in the industrial park? It's not one, just one zoning in that industrial park?
Alderman Felice, along Wooddale Road, west side of the street as well as the east. As you get to the quadrant of Thorndale and Wooddale, some years back, the city council had determined that to be rezoned to B2. Now, that B2 section runs all the way to the lot north of this property. And under B2 lot regulations, they can have 90, up to 90% lot coverage. And then we also have that new provision where if, whereby if there are B2 use group, they can be both retail and warehouse. And that was changed most recently.
So if they have B2, then that's where they have the retail. M1 is just strictly warehousing?
I thought, excuse me...
But they, but they could have retail in the M1.
Correct, correct, yes.
We made that, we changed that ordinance, just not that recent, you know?
Correct.
Not that long ago. You said, if I may ask Mr. Dudek, you said that you're looking for an occupant for, that that will have some retail?
We are currently marketing towards that, yes, sir. If we can find another MSC such as Wooddale, that's what we're, that's one of our target markets, yes. I can't guarantee that'll happen, but that is something we are actively marketing, yes.
Now, you, do you also have the building across from Thornwood? What's the address over there? The new building?
Oh, 1020 Wooddale.
1020. Is the landscaping going to be anything like it is over there?
Yes. The landscaping at 1020 Wooddale?
Right.
Yes. Well, we're going to reuse the plantings that are here at this site, obviously pull them out, burlap them, storm, and reuse those at the, if the variance goes through, reuse them on this site here. But we'll have elaborate landscaping like we do have at 1020 Wooddale, yes, sir.
And it is elaborate, okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? Alderman Caddella.
Three, three things, I'll go through them quick. First, a question for Mr. Nowick. Is this property contiguous with any other M-zone property that you're aware of? I made a disadvantage here without my zoning map in front of me. Or Mr. Clicker might know?
It's contiguous to the west and to...
Across the road to the east, right, but... East, okay, all right. Okay, right, all right. A second, with the question of the issue of proximity to B zoning, there are certain advantages, I believe, to M zoning as far as, you know, in allowable uses. That B zoning doesn't necessarily share and vice versa. So, you know, to say that we have B zoning within, you know, to the north and its setbacks are different, doesn't mean much to me. It's zoned the way it's zoned and maybe, maybe that, maybe that's an inherent problem. And third, I'll just be honest, I'm not very inclined to approve a variance based on speculation of a retail component. I mean, give me a, show me a contract and somebody wanting to come in and show me that this is real beyond a, a business venture, a business proposition, a business hope, if you will. Show me that this component is really going to happen and I'll jump all over it. But this is no different than a home builder trying to go over maximum allowable lot coverage to build a bigger house to make more money as far as I'm concerned. So that's, that's where I stand on this. Thank you.
Can I ask a question back, Alderman? If we, what assurance can we get from the city that you guys would be interested in doing in a variance like this to a tenant that's looking, hey, we'll go to this building. If you get your variance to put this improvements on it, will the city back us up on that? That's all I'm, it's a two-way street. That's all, Alderman, that's all I'm asking for. Would that be a problem?
I understand your position on that. And I believe what's typical in a situation like that is you come up with a conditional tenant and a conditional contract for leasing this and we go from there. But I'll tell you right now, I would, I would support it at that point, but not until then. I can't speak for anybody else, but I can just be honest with you and tell you where I am and that I'm not going to change on that, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Alderman Coles.
Several years ago, we sat here and tried to figure out how we could get some more sales tax in the city of Wooddale. And we came up with what happens on Route 53 in Itasca, where all from Urban Park to Thondale had all these stores in the warehouses. So that's when we decided to put in B2. And that was to help all these companies that in case they wanted to put a retail store in, they could put one in, like office supplies and stuff like that. So that's one of the reasons why you three weren't here, but Sharkey was here and I don't think, I don't think Wesley was here. And that's one of the reasons why we put it in, just in case they could get somebody to come in with a retail and manufacturing. And this is the reason why we put in B2. And it's, I think that new building was intended to have a tile outfit come in there. I don't know, that was originally...
Originally, tile was...
That was originally, and that's one of the reasons why we did it, I believe.
Yeah, tile tile was originally looking at that, correct.
I just want to let you know that this helps everybody that's in that area. So in case they do want to retail, they can put it in without much problems. All they have to do is come in and come in and apply for it, like a business license, a retail store. And even though he doesn't have one, it's a good, when he proposes this to somebody or some company comes in, he can suggest that, well, you can have a retail store if you want it. It's zoned for it, and this is one of the reasons why we did it. Thank you.
Alderman Caddella.
Just in response to Alderman Coles' statement, I was watching you guys when you did it and I commend that move as far as being able to put retail in a property like this. But, but the variation being asked for tonight is not to allow, not to allow retail, it's to make a building bigger. And if we don't end up with retail, we end up with a bigger warehouse, which doesn't do anything for us. So that's my point. I mean, I think, I think I stated fairly clearly that get some retail in here and we can, we can work something out. But the variance is to make the building bigger for anything to go in there at this point, and that's all that's really being asked for. I, I understand the, I understand the owner's goal and what they're trying to do, and that's, that's great. But that, you know, in the imperfect world, that may not come to fruition. Thank you.
Alderman Winger.
Thank you, I have a question and a comment. But the question first is, I don't believe we've looked at on the overhead, or maybe I'm incorrect, the proposed site plan. Then I'm looking at one of the handouts where we show a turnaround in the, in the back portion, back and north. So northwest?
That was, what that was, 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 we had shown that as an option because we've been asked by, that's, that portion just adjacent, could you bring the aerial back up, Peter? The portion just adjacent to our property is IEDUP, is IEDUP land. We were asked by a tenant, you know, we're asking, the area that's in question is this area of land right here, directly to the north here. We were looking at options that we could actually lease a portion of this land here, if not the whole piece. If we needed more car parking or if we needed truck turnarounds or what might be necessary. That was submitted to the original Board of Appeals and that caused a lot of confusion for them because it was not part of the original submittal. It was just try to help information out for certain questions. So I deleted that per their recommendation. So what you see, so really, it's not, it's a move point for this meeting because they require, what basically we're asking for is this configuration that we have now.
Okay, thank you for the clarification and explanation. The second thing is my comment. I am willing to, to support this, providing that my one concern is the, the frontage on Wooddale Road and ensuring that we do have even more so increased screening and landscape that on one side of you, you have a hotel, and on the other side, you have our historical society. And, but those are two places that we want people to come into Wooddale and see an aesthetically pleasing area. And I'll ask that you come back with increased screening and landscaping and even be creative. I mean, if you want to add different aspects in that frontage, a small waterfall, it, just things that screen, but make it look nice and that people want to drive past it. Thank you.
What is everybody's opinion about driving by Julosco across the street? I, I'm just, nothing, I understand, that's duly noted, it will take, but I'm just saying, the landscape requirements, I mean, our standards of gullible are much higher than the typical landscape requirements are necessary. That's all I'm getting to at this, with what's already there. There's a lot of screening there now. The vacant land is all green, it's well-kept up, well-maintained. We have nice screening now, so we do have a buffer between the hotel and our property.
And we just don't want it to get even worse.
No, no, it's not our intent.
Always better.
I understand, it's not our intent to go less with, if we did increase it because this, the area you're talking about is along this property line here. All the existing landscaping here now will stay and be maintained. It will not be, will not change based upon this improvement.
And it, and we would be giving you additional parking in front. We'd be losing that greenery. So that's why I'm asking for increased landscaping than what you're, you have proposed now.
Sure, we would still have some greenery in front of the parking though, that we'd screen off all the parking in the front of the building from Wooddale Road though, like we currently have.
Alderman Lurton.
Alderman Sharkey, thank you. Just three questions. One of them is to Chief Benowitz. Do you see any traffic control problems from increased trucks? Do you see any weight problems? Any problems with the intersection bringing in what would be obviously more trucks? And then I was going to ask, how many employees is this going to bring into the community in that area? And is the building going to be set up for modern Wi-Fi and telephone communications and internet?
In regards to, it'll be set up for current communication, Jess. If we brought, everything we brought into the building stubbed out and demarked, usually the tenant will put in for T1 lines. It's usually, it's designed for the tenant, the tenant is responsible for typically putting in their requirements to do what they, their daily business requirements are.
Okay, and the other one was about how many employees do you think?
The employees, we base it upon the tenant usage. I mean, it depends if they, if they have a showroom and a retail section, they could have a few more employees than if it was just a showroom area with a warehouse component with that.
And are you after a purchase or a lease in your marketing?
Marketing-wise, we're looking mainly at a lease, yes.
With regards to truck traffic, keep in mind that the roadway in front that they would be coming out on is a county roadway. That is maximum weight of 73, 73,280 pounds. Anything above and beyond that would be with permit. Also with regards to Wooddale Road and Thorndale Avenue, I believe the average daily count as of two years ago is about 52,000 cars per day through that intersection. They've recently put out their counters out there. We're hoping to get an updated figure on that. So anything that's coming off of that, I think in, in relation to the rest of the picture is indicative of an industrial area.
I take that to mean you've seen no enforcement problems and you'll be watching for overweight?
Everything would be, as we're doing it right now, as you know, our truck traffic program is very active. This would just be another building, another location. The impact would not be appreciable other than what's going on, which is pretty high right now, though.
Thank you.
Alderman Wesley.
Roger, can I ask you one question here? And one we discussed here, what is the requirement for parking spaces for this building? Isn't it per square footage of the building, how many parking spaces there must be on the site? And what is it for this one?
The required parking, I'm sorry. I did the calculations for staff. Go ahead, you answer, it was directed staff, I apologize.
I have the answer to the calculations for the use because that's really what, that's also what it's based on, number of employees and the type of function of the building.
Okay, and what was your calculation, sir?
The total parking required is 63 auto stalls. We have 64 in the scheme that you see right there.
I count 49 because you're eliminating the whole back.
No, if you count, if you do count, it does come to 64 on the side and the two lanes in front plus the southern...
What side?
South side.
On this side.
He's got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight on the side.
Over there, you have...
He's got eight.
There's parking along this side.
No, it's actually 10 because you've got two, two handicaps.
Well, go ahead, take the other questions.
It's marked on the plan itself on the last page, how many parking spaces there are. If I can just say that when this first came, when I first saw this, I was a little bit hesitant about it because I saw the parking from the back going to the front and I thought, oh, it's not going to look that nice. But I talked, in talking to Mr. Nowick and understanding that they are looking for something with the retail as well and Mr. Gulo has been what I consider a good neighbor in Wooddale and has tried to work with Wooddale as much as he possibly could and has, for instance, a 1020 building, he has retail in there and he has very, something very similar in the front, if I'm not mistaken. The two lanes plus a 10-foot area of shrubberies and trees and so forth to kind of break it up. And it does look nice over there. And after thinking about those things, and again, Mr. Gulo's working with us in the future and what he's, in the past and what he's done for us, I thought it would be a, I can trust that it will be a nice program. So what I'd like to do is make a motion that, or actually, I'll entertain a motion that the committee recommend to the city council that they approve case number 07-V7 for Gulo International at 888 North Wooddale Road for variations, number one being a reduction in the required backyard in the M1 Limited Manufacturing District from the standard 20 feet to 10 feet. And number two, an increase in the permitted lot coverage from the maximum of 70 to 84%, an increase of 14% to allow for the construction and use of an additional, addition to the existing industrial building in order to bring in a high-tech company that will hopefully have retail sales as well.
I'll second that.
I think we should take rule on this, please.
Wait, a question on the motion, though.
Oh, questions, yeah, please, I'm sorry.
Huh? I'm counting 62.
I'm counting 62.
Alderman Wesley, there is, there are two handicap parking spaces here as well. So it actually on the side here, it adds up to 10 spaces.
Yeah, 10, I got those.
And then we have, I can't, it's kind of blurry. How many is this?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
I'm sorry?
And that side is six?
That side is six, correct.
And over here is one, two, three, four, and this is?
19.
18.
19, and...
18. Come on, you can't, it's a half a parking spot.
Seven, eight, nine, 10, 11...
18.
15, 16...
18 spaces I count there.
No, it is 18.
This looks like it's not a space because the dimension line is there, but there are parking, that's where you get your extra space there.
Okay, and then 25 down below.
Correct.
So if it's, whether it's 63 or 64, and they're going to be looking at the possibility of putting parking up here, hopefully for the retail part of it or for the employees so that the retail parking can be up front. Any other comments? Alderman Winger.
I'm going to be courteous and I'm going to ask the question again. Are you going to come back at the council meeting with increased landscaping than you have in your proposal today?
I can bring a couple of studies back, yes, I can do that.
That you would be willing to put in?
With, yeah, we'll present some options within reason. Obviously, we can, you know, waterfalls, I don't think is an option for an industrial building, I'll be totally honest with you. Courtyard hasn't done a lot to screen itself off from this side, so I don't think they're really worried about it. Courtyard's usually filled up, as much as it's hard to believe for the parking that's out front, but they're usually built up. And my basis for that is because Osco has not done, it never had to do anything.
Alderman Felice.
Am I understanding right? The motion is that we're voting on, hopefully he's bringing in retail business?
I put that in there, I don't even know, I have to check with our council, Mr. Bond, but I put that in there because in the past, Mr. Gulo has come... Mr. Gulo has come forward with any promises he made, including money for the train station and so forth, and has worked closely with the Wooddale council and, and the staff in the past.
I'm not questioning Mr. Gulo's integrity by no means. I'm just making a vote on, hopefully we're gonna get something. Okay, no problem.
Would you prefer to have that taken out, that hopefully part?
Alderman Wesley.
First of all, his open statement, he's missing some piece of document to give to the building department, am I correct?
I'm sorry?
You are missing a piece of document to give to the building.
A document stating there was original covenants set forth when the industrial subdivision was put together, when it was still known as Forest Creek, which are covenants that I'm verifying with Roger and his staff, if they supersede the requirement of a ten-yard rear yard setback. According to the covenants, it's a ten-yard rear setback, I do not, I do not have those available to me to bring with me tonight.
Okay.
I will have them tomorrow and get them over to Roger, hit him to look at, make sure it's still concurrent for our situation.
Okay, the, the other thing that, that really bothers me now is, don't stand here and compare what was approved across the street and the landscaping on OSCO. We don't compare a building to buildings, you coming to us to do landscaping on this plan, don't go comparing because OSCO didn't do it. Don't go comparing some other building, we are asking you to move forward on doing landscaping. Don't compare the buildings, okay, because there are new council members on this board that might have not approved OSCO warehouse, okay? So don't go comparing OSCO with this building.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Has the board members been by the current building to see the current landscaping?
I have.
That's fine, and that's why I'm just asking, I just wanna make sure, that's all.
Any other questions?
Roll call.
Alderman Wesley.
No, until he comes forward with the landscaping.
Police.
No.
Alderman Lewitan.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman Caddella.
No.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Dudik. Next item. A report and recommendation on the annexation requirement for potential developments. Mr. Clicker? Or Mr. Noick?
Yeah. What you have in front of you tonight is a letter from Bond Dixon Associates regarding the policies and procedures regarding annexations as they pertain to subdivisions with new properties. Mr. Bond, in his letter, lays out the past policy, the policies of the council and the reasons for it, and he recommends that we stay with the current procedure.
Questions? Comments? And I'll make a motion that, or do we need a motion? A report and recommendation on the annex requirements, so we're just, we're not changing anything here, so we just leave it, as long as there's no motion, we just let it drop. Okay, future items. Number one is a report and recommendation on the telecommunications ordinance. Number two is an administrative adjunct. Adjudication, adjudication, okay. Is there anything else that anybody would like to add to the future meeting? If nothing, I would make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Maze? None, okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, would you like, what committee to go next here?
We can go into the Public Health and Safety, that's next.
Okay, thank you.
Be fine.
Public Health and Safety and Judicial Committee. Call to order, while we know everybody's here. And roll call, everybody's here, and approve the minutes of September twenty-seventh, two thousand and seven, so move. Any, anybody got any questions?
You said everybody's here, I think you should amend that, that all the same people are here, since we're missing one person.
The same people are here. Does anybody have any questions?
Nope.
The minutes, on approval of minutes? No questions, then we'll have, have an okay.
All in favor, aye?
Call to order. All right. I'm goofing up.
No. George, it's okay.
All right.
Minutes pass.
Minutes pass. Okay. All right. Number four, repeal of section fifteen-two-point-two-oh-twelve residential parking permits, number one. This was started out in nineteen ninety-one, and it was a three-hundred block of North Edgewood, Elmwood. Had been required that obtain residence parking permits. And this is to, this is when Proto's Plaza was there, and the parking was pretty tight in that area, so they asked the, the people that lived around there, which was a people, and they asked them to get permits and out of the park on the street, and, because there was no places to park, which was very tough. And all we're doing now, and asking, is we're repelling this on our, on our, taking it off to permanently remove this from the section, this section for residence permit, number one.
I make that a motion to remove.
I make a motion to remove.
Okay, I second your motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right. Items for future meeting, school district seven, report on choi- choice program. Location of noise monitors by O'Hara, gas can replacement program by Clean Air Act. Anybody got anything to add?
I, I have one question for the police chief here, is the choices, when will they be coming?
I still haven't heard from John Corbett, I did talk to him earlier in the week, and he is trying to get that on his schedule, I think that he's got a couple of things going, I'm hoping to have him here by the end of the month, however, I'm starting to think that maybe early November might be a little bit more realistic.
When's that program start, though, I, I thought that program started already.
It, it's been, it's been going, it's just a matter of that we do, just do a presentation and go from there, but it is right now in session.
Well, I thought the understanding was before that program had started, before we wrote the check or whatever it may do, that our chair, that they were supposed to come to us and tell us when it was starting and, and the list of kids and that, I thought that was discussion.
I believe he's working on that right now, Alderman.
Anything else? All right. We will know about the gas can replacement program when the Clean Air meetings get on, I, I, that'll be pretty soon. Okay, and number six is, I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I'm calling to order the Public Works Committee meeting, will the minute taker please reflect, the same members are present, and actually, I'll ask the minute taker, do we should go through, or, or five minutes? Sure, so, so I will recess the committee meeting, I just called to order for five minutes, thank you.
Yes, I've got it.
I decided, I decided I'd test.
I'm.
I'm calling to order the Public Works Committee meeting of October 11th, 2007, will the minute taker please reflect? The same members are present. And I declare a quorum. Next item is approval of minutes of September 27th, 2007, I make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is item number four, report and recommendation on the 2007 roadway project pay estimate, number one. And the only question I have, and then I'll open up if there's any others, but, Mr. Hall, where, how many phases do you think we'll go through? Or how many payments will we go through on this project, roughly?
I'm going to think out loud here, you're going to have one in October, you're going to have one in November, for sure have one in December and January, so I would guess to close the project, you're looking at probably five or six.
Five or six, okay. And then the retainage, that figure is only for, it's the percentage only for this first payment. Correct? And then we'll see a different retainage amount on our next payment request.
Exactly, the retainage will continue to grow.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Alderman Shaki?
Yeah, I'd just like to mention that when we're doing a street, and this probably should be coming up when we're redoing the ordinances and the zoning and so forth, when we're doing a street, I've noticed that on the street I live on, we had some people get a new apron and others didn't, and others got just a part of an apron, 18 inches, and some got 36 inches, and there was a lot of discussion between all the residents on the street because everybody didn't get the apron, full apron, like somebody else got. And I know there's reasons for it, because of the cracking, because of the water main under it and so forth. I'm just wondering if maybe with the new zoning, we should have some kind of a policy when we do streets that we should perhaps do all the aprons that are damaged in any way, so there's no question about it in the future, so people don't have to come storming in the city hall and complaining, hey, my mom isn't getting hers done, and it's the city's fault, and all that kind of thing. So it's just a comment I'd like to make, it's for the future, so it doesn't happen anymore.
And this particular program is a maintenance improvement program with the roadway, so it wouldn't have anything to do with our zoning codes. It's a resurfacing program, which means it's an intermediate maintenance process. The full reconstruction is what happens at the end of, fully end of a pavement's life, and that's when we go in and we do all the curbs and all the driveways, and we look at doing the sanitary sewers, and we look at doing the water mains. That's what we just did over on Montclair and Yeracoy. That's what we have done a lot of in the past up in Ward 4 here, is those full reconstructions. This was a resurfacing project, which is different in scope. This is spot repairs to the curb and gutter, and then we're going to mill and resurface the street. And there were some driveways, especially in your area, where the aprons were backpitched or the apron simply wouldn't drain out short of having to replace them. So yes, we did have to replace, you know, a handful of aprons. But in most cases, we didn't have to replace the apron, we simply went back, you know, a distance and facilitated our curb and gutter repairs, and that's all we did. And we could do every apron, but instead of doing 20 streets this year, we probably would have done 16 streets this year and spent the rest of the money on-